And to the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, civil law, liberty and justice.
Okay, I think we start off with public works?
Yep.
So did you get any insight from Wayne about this?
Well, I got his notes that he claims.
Okay.
Okay.
Because he said this was wrong, right?
Well, it wasn't wrong, but...
So we're doing wages now, right? Or are we skipping that entirely?
What's that?
Where do you want to start for public works?
Wait there, I, the wages, the wages part, yeah. So, I don't have my calendar. Total utility back. I think this way, he's got, he's got, uh, he's lower higher than his, his notes.
Well, I don't see any increases other than, uh, summer workers.
Yeah.
In overtime.
See, like wages overtime is 190, he has requested 160.
Well, the department request goes 190.
Yeah, this way, he, so, somebody's got 190, or he had his notes here, and as he says, that he has more, he doesn't. He had actually less in his notes. We got like...
Because last year we adopted 180.
Yeah.
The year before was 160.
Yeah.
But this is last year.
Yeah, that was his, that, that was his notes, he ran them on there, see it? Well, since doing it again, he's 24, you know? This is what he hands me. Okay, we're not gonna use that. All right, look. And the overtime, what, what's hurting him in the overtime, they're not getting the, the snow days overtime. They're not getting it. I mean, compared to, you used to get, you know, sometimes within a week you'd get stuff, and they were out there for hours trying to clear it out. And maybe they're the next day trying to clear it out. They don't have anything like that. So I would, I would say that, uh, if we're looking at the wages, the overtime probably, what, what do they have, uh, adopted, what do they have? Oh, year-to-date, that's...
That's because of the flood.
But it's flood, yeah.
That's the flood.
But he said it probably be higher than the 190 when he was here.
When he was here, what, what's, what's the old team this year?
I don't know, he, he just said it would be higher than, he thought it was gonna be higher than 190.
But he has 160.
160, uh, he's got the old one again.
Yeah.
You had made a note that you wanted to review the overtime actuals for a few years.
Of what?
You, you had made a note that you wanted the actuals for overtime for a few years to look back on, and on holiday.
The actual overtime way back in.
You should have that, right, the actuals for...
I don't have the actuals.
Oh, just the...
I just have adopted budgets.
Yeah. You know what, it's hard to, that's a hard one to compare, because what kind of winters you have, you know?
Well, I mean, I think we could take at least 10,000 off of it.
I would say so.
And, and so I'll make a motion, well, I'll make it for discussion, I guess.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to reduce the 190 to 180.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, now we can discuss it. All right. I, I think, I think that would be, that would be smart. I don't know, the 190, if you put 190 in there, you, you give them something to shoot for. The one thing they do, they do get called in a lot with these trees coming down with this damn wind. Okay, but how do you gauge it, you know?
Yeah.
And, um...
I mean, I'm just looking at the actuals from '23, '24, 166.
Yeah.
And, like you said, you don't know what's gonna happen next year, so 190 could be low.
Could, if it is, that's why we gotta continue.
Yeah, so that's why I made my motion to 180.
Okay. Anybody else got anything on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. 180.
Then summer workers from 8,000 to 16,000?
His, his thing was that people go on vacations, but...
But they spent 8,823, 24, and we approved 12,000 last year. So I'm gonna make a motion to go from 16 back to 12.
All right, I'll second that. Okay. 16 to 12. Any, any discussion on that one? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Note on why he increased it.
Let's see, he wanted 13 guys, right?
He has 13 full-time, one seasonal.
Right now?
Yeah.
He said he'd more, or five more people.
Right.
So right now he's running short anyway, isn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Right, but, uh, what's his name, he's gone, he was taking vacation now.
I had two retirements this year, possibly a third Kevin, and then mechanic.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then I don't have the, who the third person is.
Could be Wayne.
Do you think he needs at least two replacements?
And, and I think that's why he said he'll be, he'll need more, on the overtime. Cause the mechanic, the mechanic's leaving in June.
In June, but he could start hiring now, you know?
Mm.
He could, you know, years ago, there used to be a line of people in town at one of those jobs.
I think they might be hiring someone on the Board of Selectment meeting tomorrow.
For what, for...
For public works.
Public works, okay.
I think.
What about the, um, snow plow? I mean, he's got 15 in there, and he's got 78, uh, there's no more snow this year.
Mm-hmm.
So 78 is what it's gonna cost him this year. The year before it was 3,500, and they're looking for 15. I would, I would make the motion to reduce that to 10.
Is that the account, he takes the, uh, he hires the private guys, the contractors, and I think so. Could, could be wrong. Okay, what, what, give me the...
10, I, I make a motion to reduce the snow plow line to 10, 1,000.
Okay. For discussion?
For discussion.
Anybody?
I mean, I think that's reasonable, but again, with public works, it could be 25 if we get killed.
Yeah, that's why we got the contingency, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? When we move down to 10, anybody? No? Okay, 10 it is, all in favor?
Aye.
Difficult line item. Um, so they are on the Board of Selectment agenda tomorrow night, one of the items is to hire a public works utility man.
Okay. Go hire them, they're around. And the, the fringes and the benefits, we might, we'll have to get that redone. For anybody here. And a working foreman, by the way, is 79,000. That's Wayne. Okay, but his, his salary at the end of the year is usually 120. And there's a $3,000, I think stipend for, uh, driveway inspector. I remember, I picked that up. Yeah, driveways. See, driveways, 4,329.
Where's that?
Right on the top.
It's the top.
Driveways.
Oh, okay. And what is that for? That's for inspections?
Driveway inspector. Look, there's stipends all over this place that you, you can't believe. There's open burning stipends, there's the stipend for the, uh, there's a couple more, I forget. One is for the website.
You want that, yeah.
And there's, there's, um, there's another one, I can't think of what it is. This is, this one's the, uh, driveways.
Can't just compensate from the position?
Pardon?
You can't just put it inside the position and increase the salary to a few thousand dollars?
I don't know. You know, I, I don't, here's the thing, if you're getting a stipend for his driveways, should be doing that, not at the company time. Should be doing it, like, you know what I mean? Otherwise, why get a stipend, you're, you're doing your regular job.
Right.
That's the way I look at it, but... Scotty, yeah, he has open burning. He, he charged us with open burning.
Door's gotta stay open, since it's a public, uh...
Oh, all the way?
Uh, not all the way, but it's gotta stay open so people know.
Is that...
Yeah.
What are those, what are buybacks? Buybacks is, the guys that are leaving, that didn't use their, uh, their, their sick time, they feel like they're sick time, and they pay for it. Cause that's for a while, you know, for a couple of years, again, if you're... Now they got the retirees this year, so they're gonna get the buybacks. You got it. Okay, and I don't, is, is there, is there a max on that? The buybacks, like, you could take up, uh, 200 days?
It's probably in each of the union contracts. I imagine that's where it gets addressed.
It's not very, not very, it's way medium. I don't know. I don't know, but that, that's, that, that's, that's, uh... Please, lose money here, buybacks, yeah. I would change that because it's probably gonna be more. Okay?
First thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion to reduce the equipment rental up from 200 down to 175.
Second.
Highways maintenance. Because '23, '24 is 134, this year to date is 34. We adopted 175 last year, and I don't see any reason why we're up at 200. So, my, uh... My motion is just to go back to the 175 from last year.
Yeah, I don't have a note for that.
I don't either.
Equipment rental.
What was the last? Oh, you don't, oh, you don't...
I'm going just by this, so 134 last year, or, yeah.
Yes.
And 34.
Do you see on there, the, uh, where they, uh, go with the sweeper, the street sweeping? I think that's in, that rental of equipment, that could be the 200,000, I could be wrong. Street sweeping.
I don't know. I have a note that street sweeping is $60,000.
How much?
60,000.
60.
In that line item?
Uh, I don't have a line item, I just have a note in my notes from the meeting.
Yeah, I, I have similar, 60,000 at least to replace, to clean and replace catch basins.
Catch basins, and then there's, they sweep the street one time a year.
Yeah. I don't know what line, I don't have a line for...
Maybe that could be, that could be the 200,000, both of them in there?
But why though was la, yeah, 23, 24 at 134, when they do that work yearly anyways?
I have a note too, that there's 3,500 catch basins in town, that goes out to bed and it comes back 20 to 40 dollars per basin.
I have the same note, and mine looks like it's attached to the maintenance line.
Oh.
I hope it's the... No, but this, this, I, I, I know we spent the street sweeping, did he mention it when he was here? I, I know it's, cause that's what I'll be, was trying to boost that, that goes up every year, to rent those, uh, sweepers. You know, you have two sweepers and the guys, I would provide the trucks.
All I know is that sweeping is 60,000.
60,000. So the 60 in the basins have to be part of that 200. I can't, otherwise, what can I do, contract services?
Well, there's a, uh, contracted service, oh, stormwater, no, probably not that. I don't know, my note, my note is on this page, the highways maintenance page. So that must've been when he mentioned sweeping.
It's gotta be in that 200.
Well, my, my motion still stands.
So that's, that's 16?
Taking 200,000 down to 175, because of the fact that in '23, '24, they spent 134. You, this year to date, they're at 34.
Yeah, but that's because they do the, they do the sweeping and the...
No, I know, but they spent 134, '23, '24, and now they're asking for 200. So, I'm going back to the adopted budget of '24, '25, of 175.
Okay, we got any more discussion on that? Okay. I think that's gonna all rely on the two contracts they get in, the, the, the storm drains and the, uh, sweeping. Okay. But I'll go along with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Posted? Okay, posted. 175.
Under, under the same theory...
Mm-hmm.
About highway maintenance general. They're asking for 417, and, you know, they were approved last year for 375. Again, I would, I would reduce that 417 to 375.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, now, again, with this highway maintenance, we gotta be careful, we're not talking about our improvement every year. That's the, uh, maintenance we spend. That highway maintenance, that guardrails, all that stuff like that.
We'll talk about highway materials, generally.
Yeah.
I, so my note for that, I have, for that 417, I have salt, sand, risers, grass seed, concrete and mortar.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense.
And catch, catch basins.
Catch basins, yeah.
Anything and everything.
All goes in there.
Rex, concrete.
Mm-hmm.
But your motion, uh, to, to lose that to 375?
And I seconded it, yeah.
You seconded it. Just knowing the cost here, that we could spend every bit of that on 417, my opinion.
Can you make a question for next year, like, when they have an increase over a certain amount? Need to provide an explanation as to why, cause we're kinda doing the best we can, but we, we don't ask enough questions when they're here, cause we don't, you know? Those things, and now that we're here alone trying to come up with the numbers, we don't really know.
The hard thing though, too, is these year-to-date expenses.
They're not accurate, like, you can't say, well, this year we're only spending this much.
Yeah.
So we're, I don't find them.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be a no on that motion, cause I think it's a bit, too much.
Again, you wanted to take it to 3, 375? I'm sorry?
Yeah, and I seconded it, yeah.
Thank you. Could we live, just a question, could we live to take it down to 400?
All right, I'm modifying my motion, I'll reduce that to...
No, I'm, I'm just saying, if you, if you, I'll leave your motion right there.
I'll, I'll modify my motion to reduce it from 417 to 400.
I'll second that.
Okay. Just cause we, we don't really know what's in it. Okay, any discussion on that? We'll take it to 417 out of 400. Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the only comment that I'm gonna make is that just because we don't know what's in it, doesn't mean that we can't take our best guess at it, though.
Yeah.
So, because we could say that about every line item.
Well, I'm very familiar with all the works, and I know what they, I know what they buy and everything. And he tries to, sometimes on the highway, he tries to load up, like, at the end of this year, to get into next year, okay? But, again, it's, it's all, for that, that, that one, it's all again, the highway, the railing, he, the guardrail, you know, if somebody takes out a guardrail, we put it up again. If that, this and that, if a tree falls on a guardrail, we gotta, we gotta pick it up. I don't know. I just think that, uh, we may, we may be taking it down a little too much.
But if sand and salt is involved in that line item, we haven't really had to use much sand and salt the last two years.
No, but it, it does go out, it's, it's sand free, so it, yeah, I, I don't like putting salt down, to be true.
Does anyone have a note for vehicle maintenance?
You know, anything else? Well, you know, I usually just kind of... Pardon? Yeah, the, the salt.
Yeah.
Took all, rusted out his whole frame. They, they all say, well, we use stuff, it doesn't bother your frame. How about if they're frame? Okay, I, you know what? Sewing cracks, I don't know. Sewing cracks.
I'd be open to reducing vehicle maintenance from 130 back down to 110. Because 97, '23, '24, 71, 9, year-to-date?
Did anybody find that he, he didn't include the, uh, a lot of our equipment in it?
Did he have anything about...
Equipment, uh... To, equipment repair. Are you saying vehicles, is it vehicles, or is it the backhoe, is it the loader? I don't know.
Well, I'm making the motion to reduce it from 130 to 110.
Second. Um, I think, I mean, this isn't related exactly to this, but, I mean, when we have a lot of our transfers at the end of the year, that kind of makes the actuals difficult, right? Because then the actuals become not even real either. I think we should consider maybe not doing that.
The actuals are real, it's the budget that's not, the budget gets tweaked, cause they can't fill the line items, but the act, because then you're either over or under, and the budget of the actual is what it's actually spent.
We're talking, we're talking the actuals to, in the March of this year.
Maybe I've been thinking about them the wrong way then, like, if, if someone overspends on, oh, no, yeah.
We need historical actuals, is what we need.
I got, I got turned around in my head.
The actual, actual, like, where the checks went out is what the budget gets adjusted to, which makes it confusing. Okay, which is why we should have, be looking at the actual spend for the prior years and comparing it to the budgets.
I'm sure Jim must have that, like, the actual historical actuals.
It has to have it, it's in the ledger.
Yeah.
Getting it out and giving it to us is, I guess, difficult.
Well, the auditor has it, that, he was just waiting for, for, here, for, get the, the, the last thing. The auditor lays it out by, takes it, the budget in and take the revised budget in each department all the way out.
Well, then, can we, well, add to the line?
I asked him, I asked him just to send me that, because he has to have that done, the auditor has to have that.
They have the auditor send it to you?
I, I'll call him again, I asked him to.
Oh, you asked the auditor?
I asked him. And he's got, uh, the, this young lady working on this audit, and I guess they're, he's, uh, trying to get his attention, right, on this one. But he keeps telling me, they wait for Board of Ed, for stuff, and then they wait, they wait for the town side. And they have to reconcile what the Board of Ed got from the town, has to be the, you know? If we have in our budget that we gave 35 million, it's gotta equal that 35 million, when they put the cash out. They always have troubles tying that up, why, I don't know what they do. I don't know.
No, the motion still stands to bring it from 130 to 110.
Okay. Okay, any, any discussion on, any further discussion? Anybody? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 110 it is. See, the next page is the, uh...
Before we move on. Supplies, departmental. 6,223, 24, 2,000 year-to-date, 10,500 requested.
The 2,000 year-to-date is suspect.
That makes me think that maybe things haven't been turned in.
Possibly, but is, a hundred dollars has a bit turned in, a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars? No, no, I know, I'm saying like...
It'd be 15, you don't know.
Yeah. But I'm just looking back to, you know, two years ago. 6,200.
Mm-hmm.
Now you're almost doubling it, I mean, not almost doubling it, but 62 to 10,5?
Mm-hmm.
Has paper blown up that much? I don't have any idea. So I'm making a motion to reduce 10,500 back to 9,000.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and there it is, equipment, equipment maintenance, 78,000. Don't myself crazy looking for. And... Just wanna make sure it wasn't stuck into vehicle maintenance. Equipment made, that's gotta be the backhoes, all of, all of, something like that.
We didn't touch that.
No, we didn't touch it. Yeah, but fine. Okay. This, this, Peter, how do you... Stormwater, that's, we, we, we farmed that out at 22, 25, 6, 25,000, we do farm that out, because you can't put the water down, you can't even wash your truck there, it's gotta be all through a filter. Everything's gotta be tested, you gotta put a report on the storm drains every, every month, a report, right? It's, it's just a lot of state paperwork. That's why, that's, that's contracted.
I had a note in the margin, I think this actually refers to the previous page, but that we were supposed to get the gasoline usage report.
Yeah.
I, I did.
I've been asking for three years. We got that program up there, and I said, who's using all the gas? Oh, we gotta report, no problem, we got the report. Right? So, it'll tell you by person, they each have a card, it can tell you who's, who's using, using what. So, it'll tell you by person, they each have a card, it can tell you who's, who's using, using what.
Don't have that in it. Do we have to request it through Jim?
I asked, I asked, I got, I got the, asked Dawn. That was the one that runs it. She says she'll, she'll get it for you, that's what she told me. But couldn't do it right there. But it's up there, just ask Dawn, try it. I, I have more.
I'm, I'm trying to be with her, so I'll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You'll have more luck than me.
She lives close to us, she lives um in the, on the lake, in the Swan Lake area, so we were chatting about the bridge.
Yeah, that's where, that's where you got it. See who's got, who's using it and how much we're using. Don't forget that the school buses use the pump up there too.
Yeah, I can wait in two years. Alright, we'll see.
See, I'm wondering like if you were to go through every line item in every department and sum up the computer maintenance, which is your IT contract, can't you just, could we potentially hire a, a technology person at a flat salary versus, you know, uh, this other company?
Yeah.
Who's on call?
No, that's, that's not, that's, that's a really good idea.
That is.
That's a real good idea, and you know what? They're also kind of savvy, so we can get our programs running.
Yeah.
Okay? Cause that's what they have with the schools, they have, they have a IT person that's savvy enough to run it.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just here. This is the twenty-two thousand dollars for across here, fa- facility maintenance services, okay? I'd like to take that down to nineteen.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Sorry, which?
Facilities maintenance.
Services.
Services, to nineteen.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I just wanna flag that the the fuel, when the actual twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty thousand, but there's not a change. Um, the request is at fifteen. So there's not anything year-to-date, probably say buy at ones, I suppose, but I don't know if we wanna do something about that.
Well, they have, they have one, they have a year-long contract.
Yeah. But if they went over before, should we? If we, if we suspect that that, that they'll go over again, should we just?
Make a proposal?
Um, I make a motion to increase the heating fuel oil from fifteen to twenty.
To increase it?
To increase that line, yeah. To re, to reflect the actual. If we're gonna ask.
For discussion purposes, I'll second that.
Okay.
What, what is this line item?
This is crazy, what is, fuel oil, heating oil, that's.
Is that to heat the building or is that?
Yeah, cause they, they don't have, they don't have gas up there, so it's the heating oil. And that's all, the heating oil purchased on, on, on what contract that we negotiate. Okay? And.
Is it based on deliveries? Perhaps they over-delivered last year and had, really had deliveries this year because there's nothing spent.
Well, we buy so many gallons at a time, okay, so buy enough gallons that it's for the year. And it's all those buildings up there, it's, it's, it's just all the schools. Uh, I don't know.
It just seems like that nothing.
Yeah, yeah, year-to-date, zero.
So could they have filled up before the end of the, you know?
No. No, it's not, this.
But they're only asking.
There's a couple of things happening here. So, the stuff isn't in there. The stuff, the, a lot of these numbers could be false or wrong, they're in the wrong account. Okay, you got that running against the stuff. The stuff could be in the wrong account. We haven't spent zero on oil. So we got a motion here to go to twenty. Okay, anybody else had, any, else say anything? All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
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 They only asked for the fifteen, so.
See, and that was my view too, like if you.
Know something that you can't see.
Like when you see a glaring error, like we did the other day where it was like two hundred dollars, should've actually been two thousand, that was just an error. This, they requested fifteen, so. I get it, what you're saying, cause if you go back and look at the heating fuel oil, I mean, it was fifteen, 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 twelve, but then further back was twenty, it was twenty-two.
So it fluctuates, so it's one of those that even if you put at fifteen or twenty, it could be wrong.
I don't know if Jim allocates it by department, because if we're buying all on contract, and I can't picture him running out there and getting the tickets the, the printout, if, if it's spread like that. Alright, so that's gonna be, based from a dollar on the contract, Supplies Office, the tele, telephone, there you go again. The telephones. I'm sure there's money to be saved here on this whole deal with telephones, and so you really had a handle on it, okay? Really. We'll finish with that, we'll go to recycling.
This is Coordinator Wayne? I don't know, is it?
No. It's uh, it's uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I, I think it's, I don't think it's Wayne. It could be, it could be. Right? You see how they move these things around? It could be.
So that's a snipe. One person one day and then the other line item is one person two days.
Yeah, one guy, one guy gets overtime working the Saturday, and one guy is assigned to that place so he gets his, or whatever pay. You know, that could be a quite, like, I should get him on the phone. He wouldn't sleep, if I call him out, ask him a question, he would sleep all night.
The contract is seriously bulky waste. Do you guys have any notes on that?
There are two bid, all contracts.
So that's just sort of a guess?
The only note I have, yeah.
That one fifty is just a guess, we don't know what's still coming out.
I had that it will be back before the budget is finalized.
Yeah. It's out, what, USA does one of the, one of the hauling, and I forget who the other one is.
I have a separate company for mattresses, but I don't remember the name.
U, USA is one of them, and the other one is, and they're two contractors, they both, they all bid on that stuff.
I know that electronics is another one too.
Is it what?
Electronics, is a different company.
Electronics and matches, matches is a part of it.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We don't pay.
That's, that's, yeah, electronics, we, they take it away for us, cause they, they get the copper out of the, there and things. And the mattresses, I don't know what they do. I think they, they resell them on television. That's, that's a sticky wick. Tires. I'll tell you. One thing that saves Oxford is having this place there, because otherwise, like other times, you find the tires in a mattress alongside the robe. What's single stream? Contracted single stream.
Probably single stream recycling.
What is it?
Single stream recycling, probably, I don't have a note, but that's a thing where you can put all recycling in one bin and they take it.
The paper goes in with the plastics.
Yeah, about, I believe that's.
I'd be tempted, but that, they, that gets a lot of use. That gets a lot of use. Register of voters, she was here.
So we're not doing anything with recycling?
Huh?
Nothing with recycling?
Those are, those are kinda, those, those contracts are kinda, picks are not bid on. It's going, you know what, recycling is gonna go up, certain, not, not gonna recycle, money would go down. I mean, we could, we could revisit that if we have to. Register of voters, she had everything here, and they have, they have all the uh, what do they have this year besides?
What, 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 this come, like, um.
Next year, next year we got the municipal elections.
This year we do. Well, yeah, this, this, this budget.
This budget, yes.
Yeah.
But is there any uh?
Well, no, maybe I don't.
Are the wages uh by contract?
Oh, wait, I do.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm, if you want, I have this, this is the what she gave us for. They came on the first night, so if you're, if you're looking back, it should be near the beginning of your staff.
Yeah.
She had a handle on some.
So three pages total? I don't know.
See, I wrote down here, she, she emphasized she is, no state funding this year for early voting or anything.
Yep, we are getting new tabulators, we had to pay a dollar for them.
Yeah. Does that go into effect now, the new tabulators for? All the states gotta buy, the, the, the state done bought them and then now they're, they spend that on a hundred million, and now they're sweating to, because Trump doesn't want those? So they could be all scrapped? I read that, I just read. That's all the money.
She has everything I didn't want to hear.
See, that's your Bailey Wick.
It's everybody's.
No, it's, you, you spend all the time over here as a moderator.
I could tell you that they do an inordinate amount of work. So as an example, I know that the, I can just say, if I'm looking at the, the deputies, I know it went up from sixty-eight-hundred to twelve thousand, but there's two deputies, so that's six thousand each. And essentially, that's five hundred bucks a month. That's really not that much for the amount of work that they do, they're in that office, you know, weekly, the deputies, and then come around the elections, whatever it might be, they do a, a ton of work.
And the check, the checkers, they got the minimum wage
Yeah.
hit going up.
But I'm assuming that the wages are, are, are governed by contract, right? Because the way I read their note is, the way they wrote it was their pay is, is well below uh their qualifications due to the training.
That was for the deputies, that was for the deputies.
Well, that took it here too. But isn't these governed by contract or no?
For the registrars and the deputies?
I don't know, are they? I'm assuming, right?
Like, is there like a, like a statewide wage for them? I don't.
Well, I mean, are they a part of the like union or non-union contracts here in the town hall?
No, they're.
Not, not.
Oh, cause they're, they're state employees, right?
No.
We're talking about the registrars.
The registrars, no, but they're, they're.
Cause they're, they're local employees, we pay them, local employees. They get their, their, they get their marching orders from the state.
Okay.
Okay, that's what they do.
I don't think they're part of the union.
No, they're not. Huh?
Are we underpaying them?
Oh. All the years I've been doing this, what's her name, always said that she was underpaid. Yeah, Linda Crowe, always said, okay, but uh, who doesn't think that way? I think uh.
Thinking that, you can also compare to what other people are being paid.
Don't forget the rest of the year, that they're supposed to be working the rest of the year. Other times they switch, so they'll work maybe four hours a month. Right? At the offices here, they switch off on it, so it's not heavy lifting the rest of the year, just during, uh, when we have the election. And now that the state did put more on us on them now, with the early voting and all that, and the regulations. But the federal government's trying to oversee the elections and it's a big quid pro quo now. I don't have a problem with this.
I think we should leave it the way that it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it too.
But as a side note, back at the, the actual twenty-three, twenty-four was eighty-four thousand, now it's a hundred fifty-five, but a lot of that has, has more regulations on it. Okay. When the selectmen was, selectmen? Right?
So one of the biggest changes is the grant writer, right?
The grant writer, and, and we had spoken to her about, that should be, that person, the grant writer, should follow, all the, all we're talking about is doing all the hot, all the paperwork on the grants, what we get, what we spend, what we haven't received, all that, to chase that, she agreed she'd do it, and she wants to come, I invited her to come to our regular meetings, so we could discuss it.
No, but is the increase in pay because that person's going from part-time to full-time?
That's, that's the proposal. That's the proposal, I, I don't think it's, have they done that yet? Anybody? No? No, no, I. I barely know her name.
My only note is currently part-time, wanna go to full-time.
Yeah.
But that was at the beginning of March, we saw them, so.
March, it was March ten, I think.
March, something like this. What does the like, I have to go on that?
Uh, is that a union? I don't know which ones are in the union, which ones are not.
It's not, that's, as of now, that's, it's not a union job, no. It's a grant writer, right now it's a part-time job.
Let me see if it's on the agenda for.
What determines if something in town hall is union or non-union? Like what's the?
The union, the union, as soon as you hire somebody, the union wants them in the union. Okay, they keep the supervisors up, I don't know, I don't know the final determination, but the union always wants everybody in. Okay, now they, now they got the control of it.
So what makes the, who makes the determination as to which jobs are union or not union?
Well, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta arbitrate. You gotta go say, no, this is not a union job, this is a pure management job, okay? It's, it's, it's. I got one obvious one here in the selectmen. And that's that seventy-five thousand dollars, that he wants to hire a, a lobbyist, okay? And I said, reduce that seventy-five thousand dollars to zero.
I second that one.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Real quick though, that's under contracted services professional?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you asked a good question too, upon time. You said, we're out there looking for our, all our stuff, what about our, our representatives getting this, so why, why are we paying this guy?
It's different, it's different, it's not the same thing.
No, I'm just saying, it, it, it could be, it. No, I'm just saying, it it could be, it could be the same thing if they wanted to make it the same thing.
He's trying to do his best, but it's a different.
Anyway, that's zero.
Um, just quickly back on the grant writer thing, I just went and looked back at the last several agenda. There wasn't anything about making that full-time yet, so I think it's still part-time.
Okay, so the motions there to reduce that seventy-five thousand to zero, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And.
What dues do we pay? Like, what are dues?
Dues is that's that's for your municipality we belong to.
Okay.
Council of governments and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. Nice to have, you know, the old nice to have, not necessary.
Why do engineering fees get charged to the the selectman's office?
That was for, that was the engineering for, that was supposed to be jobs like uh that went up at uh. Christian Street, not Christian Street, I'm sorry, uh Route forty-two going up. Route forty-two. Uh Chestnut Tree Hill Road, that 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 whole deal in there, right? That was the engineering for that, and I think it was other engineering, why are they carrying it now? I don't know, I really don't. We had him here, I I can't remember. Does the engineering love, like that, who requires an engineer besides planning and zoning? Maybe building department, I don't know. I don't know. Want to take that down a little bit?
Yeah, I'm just looking at engineering fees, I mean, last last year was eighty-one, year-to-date is fifty-seven, I mean, they're asking for fifty, so. I'm okay with keeping it as is.
Could, I'm not sure, could this possibly be for stuff like the main, like where else would like the Main Street project engineering come from?
That comes from that grant.
No, but often those we have to pay, like the town has to pay for the engineering.
Yeah.
Well, as an example, I think on the agenda for tomorrow night, they're requesting approval to go to the state to get uh the cost for engineering for the potential of that new sidewalk on the other side, which hasn't been approved yet. So, but it looks like they're trying to get, they're gonna have to spend some money to go to the state to start designing it. So maybe that's what this is.
Could be, that could be. That could be. Aren't you the secretary?
To me, it's kind of like backwards, because why would we start designing something that hasn't even been approved yet? So we're expending money for something that might not ever get approved.
Yeah, but the other thing is, if they go ahead, they go ahead and they start that thing, then you're stuck with the cost, that's the tail on these all these grants.
You're stuck with the.
Our our portion.
You're you're stuck with the design of it, you're not stuck with the project.
Yeah. What's the thing, Helen keeps telling me on that sidewalk, when she was the grant writer, she said, we're stuck with twenty percent of that whole the whole deal.
Yeah, if if it gets approved.
Yeah.
And it hasn't been approved. And you know my position on that.
No, we never paid the ninety thousand dollars, we didn't approve it, they never paid that for the stereo to be to do the on Chestnut Tree Hill Road. Do that, I said, yeah. To do that uh engineering for the the intersection there. And the sidewalk, I don't know, aren't you the secretary for the sidewalk commission?
Me.
Yes, you, yeah, no?
No.
I thought you were.
Just just you guys.
Huh?
I don't really care what the other person, I'm just kidding, I no, I only I only do this.
Only this? We're gonna squeeze the truth out of you. We're we're gonna put that light on you and. Okay. So that fifty could be that, that could could be tied into the sidewalk. I don't know. The one other thing I could think of too is uh our proposal to buy Shriver Farm, okay? What's holding it up is uh. We have the money.
I was just gonna say, probably you have the money for that.
We have the money, okay, we're holding it up is that big piece of land, okay, which I didn't think as I was in on that, the whole piece of land, there's a lot of people that live around it. And there's trouble with those deeds, because that thing's a gazillion years old, okay, so they gotta get a lawyer to 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 vote in and find a property once, okay? Cause we just can't, we can't just buy it, cause it could be buy other people's property.
Oh, my God.
Huh?
That's terrible.
That's the way it is, that's the way it is here. So that could be an act too, I don't know. Okay. So that's the only thing out of there, that's seventy-five, anybody else? Anything else?
Yeah, something else is over there. Is the the facility manager going away?
Street lighting.
I don't see anything in there.
Facilities manager, it's under secretary.
Well, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but facilities manager has a year-to-date.
Is what?
I don't know if that, if that's even. I think, was it previously like his wages were spread among the like the library and is that a situation where that happens?
Okay, facilities manager.
And Jim hasn't distributed, doesn't, is that one of those like distribution of wages depending on where, what building he was at?
Uh. Okay, the reason it was that, the prior year was that salary, cause that's he never, he wasn't there a full year, okay? Well, if he wasn't here, I don't know where he started, but anyway, he's in another department. Is he in town hall maybe? He's in another department.
There's um. I mean, there's a buildings custodian, a wages custodian, and a maintenance, wages maintenance.
That was really maintenance, yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause that has that is a zero for year-to-date, okay, so that's I see. Alright, so where do we go tax collector?
We go, well, we go, street lighting. I told you, you didn't shut the lights off.
I did look though, we do have a street light at Bee Mountain Set Down.
You do?
We do.
Yeah. And I noticed one at Bee Mountain Tree Hill Road. And tax collector. Wages. Helen got to the top, now, right, did she get certified?
Um, she said she. She passed not test, she was determined, it's not official or something.
Cause the painter, the painter's the top.
She knows she passed the test.
Test, oh, yeah, she she. She has no problem.
But one more year of in-office experience.
One more year off it, okay.
I have a note that said that they would do many talk, they reduce the assistant tax collector of fifty-two, six forty-nine.
Oh, yep, you're right, um, they have a M O A between the union and the town, because her hours are gonna go, or I don't know, his or her hours are gonna go from thirty-two to thirty-four.
So they were they were reducing it themselves. And that's what she said, cause she had the exact number, fifty-two thousand, six forty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So you wanna reduce that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, didn't she already reduce it?
I don't know, it's on here though. The old number is on here.
She she already, she already, she reduced the assistant tax collector wages. She had, they had talked, the night that they came, when Helen was here, she talked about because the person's hours changed, they were ready to open thirty-two instead of thirty-four.
You know what, I really want, the person's working, I want us forward with the wages. We talking two thousand dollars?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Well, that's, I'm just going to.
Did she say, okay?
And that's what she said.
Helen, okay, go and just act them out. Okay, go ahead, make the motion.
Make the motion based on what was said to make the assistant tax collector fifty-two thousand, six forty-nine.
Reported by the tax clerk.
Who made the tax clerk?
Fifty-two thousand, six forty-nine. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, computer maintenance.
I mean, there could be the software in there, or or it could be like a a service contract. Cause I know they use the website to do um.
We do.
The tax bills and stuff.
Quality data we use, they do the tax bills, they do uh.
And those all the bills.
All the, yeah, and they do the uh, they send out all the all the tax bills, okay? And I think they do the the W P C A too.
I mean, computer maintenance might just be like a catch-all.
Could be.
So.
Shouldn't be, but it is.
Shouldn't be, but it but it is, it seems.
No, there isn't, there's not much else there. Have we got any, how would you do that, Tom clerk, wages there?
So Margaret and Linda are both retiring. And they're going to become the part-time, those two new part-time lines are gonna be Margaret and Linda. So we'll go from what whatever they have now to two part-time and two full-time, so the two lower ones, the assistant one and assistant two are full-time.
Okay, assistant one is.
Meredith.
That I don't, oh, yeah, Meredith and then Lori is assistant, Lori's assistant two.
Lori's gonna be.
The clerk.
The the town clerk, yeah, so what happens to the other two, they?
Margaret and Linda are gonna be part-time.
Part-time, Margaret says she'll do that to all.
So they'll be two full-time, two part-time as of July first.
Landowners, will you touch that?
I don't think there's much.
The tax clerk is the same.
Why is um postage zero, zero, and it was asked for five hundred? It was zero two years ago, zero year-to-date.
I don't know, I can't believe it's zero. I can't, I can't believe it's zero year-to-date. Okay, something. It's got picked up from somebody else's department.
Usually somebody's paying postage.
Tell you what postage, maybe they're. Maybe it's in the town hall postage. I don't know, it's, they're asking for twelve thousand dollars, so maybe.
So wages town clerk part-time, okay?
That wages town clerk part-time will become Margaret. And wages town clerk assistant part-time, Linda will be one of them.
So the fifty thousand that's in the department, fifty thousand, four twenty-seven. Whose side, whose wages are we looking at? Is that?
Margaret.
Margaret, is that for the year, fifty thousand we're gonna pay her part-time?
No, that's, that's what they said. I don't have any information on the hour, I don't know how long.
Well, part-time would become the most, the highest paid, I think that's not. Let's revisit this one, if you can push back here.
I mean, you would think, I mean, just speaking, you know, you would think that part-time versus two full-time people, and the part-time, I don't care what your experience is, you're making more than the full-time people.
That's what I mean. It's part-time.
Yeah.
And part-time, part-time, by our our manual and everything, our part-time is nineteen hours a a week, right?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah, I think that's part, if you weren't nineteen hours, I think you're not part-time anymore. Thank.
I thought it was after nineteen and a half.
Nineteen, oh, and a half, I.
I think. I thought you had to get benefits.
Oh, yeah, I heard. You could get benefits, working less, but I, you know, I don't know.
So these salaries have been determined already, is that correct?
I have, no, they don't look right, something's not right.
Well, we 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 don't do this.
No, we're gonna come back to this one, we have to.
We can't do anything about it, though.
Yeah. Jessica, are you on the committee for salaries for the town, town clerk? You're not, you're not with me.
And put around all these committees, Jessica, just for Jessica.
I know.
That's a double her.
So that would come out to about forty-eight dollars an hour?
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah.
I can't.
Using twenty hours.
Something something's wrong with this, the whole salary.
Over fifty-two weeks.
Has to be. Has to be.
Well, do we know, we don't know how many hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
We'll come back to this one.
I don't have it, I don't want to help me out.
We'll have to come back, we have to re-figure that, we change, any changes like that, the benefits gotta get changed.
Town council.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna go along with the uh selectmen and make a motion to reduce the one hundred thousand dollars down to seven thousand.
Yes, sir.
I second that.
Okay, right, right to those where you get paid too much, right?
Uh, someone.
Actually, let me let me amend that. I'm going to uh make a motion to reduce the legal services from a hundred to seventy and legal expenses from ten to five. So there's two items there.
Okay, so you wanna make that second line, legal expenses down to five thousand, okay, that's all in one motion?
Correct.
Well, that's all one motion?
One motion is to, the the complete motion is to reduce two items, legal services town council from one hundred thousand dollars to seventy thousand. And the second item is to reduce the legal expenses from ten thousand to five thousand.
Total reduction thirty-five thousand.
You can take my second off then, because you did it all in one.
Do we, what is the act, like what is legal expenses? And like what what goes into that line that's different from legal services town council? Do we know what that actually is?
Legal services town council, that's where our town council hires another lawyer to to first, something specific. And he's not uh, you know, up on, okay, you want a a land use lawyer. Maybe our town council doesn't do that, so he hires that, or to defend some lawsuit that he'll hire another council to do that.
But then what, wouldn't that be the additional council line? Like, I don't know what these four.
The additional council, that's which, what are you talking about?
I don't know what legal expenses or actually what legal claims, like what that means.
Maybe legal expenses might be his travel back and forth, and he's charging us mileage, you know, or he's charging us. You know, or he's charging us food, or he's charging, I'm just making a guess here, but that's what I could see him charging from an expense perspective.
And claims, what do you think that could be?
You know, even time, you're watching the town meeting, or he sits, comes here to the selectman's meeting, we're paying. Whether he makes one opinion or not, all night.
The actual was zero though, for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I just want her.
Oh, come on.
Not, not something we can.
He's making money.
Not something we can answer tonight, I guess, but I'm just curious, like what goes in those four lines?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm, so let's vote on those two things first.
Okay. All right, so we're taking thirty-five thousand dollars off that. We're taking thirty, thirty and five of those two lines.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay.
And then, I'm going to make an additional, uh, motion to reduce the legal claims to zero.
To five thousand?
Yep, because, uh, essentially you had zero in twenty-three, twenty-four, and year-to-date you have two hundred and sixteen dollars. I'll, I'm going to amend that, I'm going to change it to five hundred dollars.
Five hundred?
Yeah, five hundred.
So you're going down forty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. You're reducing the legal claims by forty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
That's your motion. Who's second?
I did.
You did?
Mm-hmm, second.
Any, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, let's see, let's see.
So we have a building custodian and a maintenance line?
We've got a wages custodian.
That's what I'm saying, wages, building custodian, wages, maintenance, what's the difference?
I think that wages, maintenance, we just found that in the select. I think we found that.
That's, I think that's, that you go facilities.
Facilities.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
But the, the point is, we got wages, we got building custodian, and we got wages custodian. We've got one's fifty-eight dollars, the other's nineteen, but what is the, who's the buildings custodian? Am I reading our line?
Jim gave initials, he said custodian TH, custodian is more allocated to town hall. I don't know who it is.
The, the building custodian is who?
TH.
Town hall.
Town hall. New guy we got here, we're going to start, town hall.
I mean, you have three items, building custodian.
Yeah. I think he has three custodians.
I mean, Nancy said it's GR.
Yeah.
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 That's me, what you said.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the facility.
Well, year-to-date on that, you can't, year-to-date, uh, your card, you've got, you've got zero there.
Yeah, because I think that that is actually, that, but, that is.
Nineteen thousand.
It was in the other.
It's in, it's in the, yeah, it's in the selectmen's budget. The selectmen's budget has a year-to-date, but no department request, so I think it just.
No wrong.
It's just a no wrong at bottom right now.
I'll put a note here and move it. And again, here's all the computer costs. We got it. We got time to go through and add up all the computer costs. Okay. Again, I'm, I'm going to, I'm confused again. We got facilities, maintenance, and then we've got the guy, the building, uh. We got the wages, maintenance, sixty-seven thousand, we got the building and maintenance, something's wrong here. Global maintenance, our software.
Well, we have the custodian and the wage.
Huh?
We have to revisit this.
This, this is, this is crazy. I think we're not, somehow, it was supposed to get pushed out, but it didn't? I don't know. This is, we're going to come back to this department. Were, were you two on that one? Were you two on that one? The wages reception? We're going to have fiasco.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a note that one one's not filled, the one that's nineteen.
The, the, the other one? What's the, what's the deal with the two receptionists? One receptionist is not here anymore, and the other one's doing the whole job, or is that how that works?
How is she supposed to?
She's on a committee.
I'm not.
She's on a receptionist committee.
She's on every committee.
The, the only, the only note I had on the, the, the second line, I have not filled currently, which makes sense, because the year-to-date is only nineteen forty-nine. So at least as of when I wrote that, there's not anyone in that position, but I don't know if that means the other per, like, I don't know.
Okay. We'll find out. I think, I think this.
Do you want the receptionist to go somewhere else? I don't know.
I thought one had, maybe could have had a health problem? No.
I have the secretary position still vacant, is that the secretary?
No, not, it's different.
No, that's, that's, that's still in the secretary general.
I mean, it's just my opinion, I don't think reception is needed, but I'll leave that. Because we have an automated phone system that directs you to what departments.
Yeah.
You can have a board that says what room numbers are different departments. So what does the reception person actually do? I'm not questioning what they do, but like, what do they do, you know? You know, like, I'm not questioning.
Well.
Isn't everybody, isn't everybody so friendly?
Have, have you ever come during the day, you have to stop there first? You can't just go out there.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, you, you have to, I always stop at her desk.
Yeah. And during COVID, that was.
No, but it, it's still, she'll stop you.
Is she smiling?
Well, I always say hi, I say, I know who she is, but.
She may stop you, but I don't know if she can stop you, because it's a public building. So.
There you go. I, this way, custodian, your wages custodian, that's, that's what I have here.
Okay, and facilities maintenance?
And, and for wages maintenance, it's.
I know who he is, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you.
Then how about the facility maintenance, town clerk, the, the forty thousand dollars?
That, I don't know.
That's another forty thousand.
That's not a wage though.
But that's not, that, that's just for us.
That's to keep us.
That's just more maintenance cost though.
Maintenance cost, right.
Yeah, it's not wages.
No, it's not. And Brett, they got your favorite here.
Oh, this, the website statement?
That's awful.
Telephone.
Oh, telephone.
I do have a note that that's dedicated fiber outfit line for the register.
That I understand.
That is it. That's the one.
Yeah.
For the, uh, for the voting. The vehicle maintenance, I, there must be some of that collection out in the yard out there. Maintenance, I don't know. Year-to-date, twelve hundred. And I don't know, what, again, they have a vehicle dedicated to town hall?
George has a vehicle.
That's in, uh, that's in, um.
Is that him?
That being, that being a selectman.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll find out. There are, there are, uh, a collection of old vehicles over in the back of the parking lot, so, yeah.
George's vehicle is not in select.
Pardon?
It is not in select.
No, it's not.
So we, town hall?
Town hall. He could have vehicle? I don't know.
I assume.
Yeah, gasoline is up there. All right, let's look to center school. That's, that's a big yes.
Well, it said the police department is moving in.
Yeah, as of July one. And nobody's got it in their budget. The capital, the, the work being done is, is a capital, okay, not capital, arbo, okay? But, well, who's picking it up from July one?
Didn't the police put in, they grabbed some electricity, right? Didn't they, did you know the line for electricity?
Yeah, but they're paying for electricity now.
But they increased it like two-fold.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like twenty square. Yeah, it's like twenty-two hundred square feet, and it's going to like ninety-eight or something, so he, I do remember, I had a note for that, he, he increased. Look for the rest of it, I don't.
Well, park, there was parking erectors in there. That I know of, okay? And they've got the eternal problem with the heat there. That's forever. I'm sure as we get going, it's going to be a hell of a lot more expenses in that building than what we're budgeting for. Yeah.
I hope they don't come and ask for more money for that building, you're already in my position.
Um, did building custodian go somewhere else?
Pardon?
Did the buildings custodian that went someplace else? That he, he.
Town hall.
Okay.
Needs to combine his.
Well, I mean, there was, there's nothing for this year, it was, no.
But the actual belongs with the master.
Yeah.
Put that down to. Jim, because we've got to figure out, this stuff is all scattered around. Treasurer. Sue made the motion to cut that salary.
No, I don't.
No, actually, if you remembered when Jim was in here, I think, there's supposed to be two and a half percent increase. So that eighty, that eight thousand and seventeen, actually supposed to be eighty-two seventeen. So I'll make a motion to increase eight thousand and seventeen to eight thousand two hundred and seventeen to reflect the, I guess, two and a half percent pay increase that was not calculated into the budget.
I'll second that.
We just got to redo that.
Benefits.
Penis.
Or whatever.
The assistant treasurer, he tells me, he doesn't take the money. Gives it back, I don't know. Who knows?
Eight thousand two seventeen.
Okay. What? Did, who made the second?
I did.
You did? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nobody here wants to go tell Dana we cut her. Tree removal.
Huh?
You know what, here's the thing. Seems like the power's staying out of town a lot better, I don't know if this is true, I don't know if this is true to this. But I had my grandson buy car about, about five years ago. A tree came right down on Shelton Road, as we were dri, right, right before we got there, the tree came down. So I could see it from down the road, you could measure it. So these things are dangerous. Problem is that the trees could be thirty feet off the road, and it could still reach and hit you on the road, but we try.
Yeah.
We used to do nothing years ago for tree removal, nothing. So I don't know.
Well, I guess my question would be is, it looks like, whatever the amount is, like, we spent two hundred in twenty-three, twenty-four, I don't know if that's correct. Year-to-date we're at seventy-seven. The selectmen suggested reducing the two fifty down to two hundred. And they suggested, uh, no, that was the big change. Oh, and they, and they suggested reducing the contracted services flaggers from thirty-five down to twenty-five.
Yep, those two numbers.
So, I, I'm going to make the motion for discussion purposes to reduce the, uh, contracted services tree removal from two hundred and fifty down to two hundred. And the contracted services flaggers from thirty-five to twenty-five.
My second.
An extra fifty thousand dollars to cut down trees, I mean, maybe it's worth it, I don't know.
I think it's worth it.
I think it's worth it too.
We've, we've been, we've been fighting to get this thing.